Your order? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bigger, roll call please.
Harrington.
Here.
Perkins.
Sleeping.
About the same.
Brandon.
Here.
Kineman.
Here.
Tyre.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
All right. Our presenter is running a little late, so we will proceed to our Budget Department's General Revenue. Mr. Walker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President of Council. So you'll note in your packet, we have the budget. It's labeled Consent Agenda 12 because this is Consent Agenda 12 for your Tuesday night packet. So if you remember to either look this over prior to the meeting or bring it with you, although I know all of you will be looking at the packet prior to the meeting. But this will be Consent 12 on your Tuesday night agenda. And just like we talk about every year, and I don't think we talked about this last year, but this is a reminder. So this, these budgets that you have, the appropriations budgets as well as the revenue, which we're going to talk about today, so these are as close as we can determine at this time. But keep in mind, we still have not received final confirmation from the county regarding property taxes, and so we budgeted those at a conservative level. So we didn't spend more than what we were sure we would get, as well as some of our state sharing money that we did also. And so really, the expenditures will be much closer because we get all those figures or expenditure rates earlier, and so those are much closer, the expenditures are, but the revenues could vary just a little bit. So just as a reminder, and just like every year, the budget really is a living and breathing document. I mean, it changes throughout the year depending upon what happens. You know, we could have a windfall of revenue, which would be a good problem. We don't really expect it. Or we could have a windfall of expenditure, if unexpected things happen, which will cause budget amendments, you know, throughout the year at the end of the year. So I say that just as a reminder. So first up under your departmental budgets is General Revenue, and that's the first page of that consent document that I sent you. So we, when we looked at property taxes, we estimated property tax increase at 2%. Now, we expected it to be a little higher, and we hope that it will, but there's no guarantee that it will. And so this figure that you see in here is a 2% increase. So if you look at the difference between amended budget '22, '23, and then the proposed budget or recommended budget '23, '24, that 2% increase does not equal a very large sum of money, and so that's the case. So people say, oh, your property taxes go up, the revenue you receive from sewer should have lots of extra money. That's not the case. Usually it's around $25,000 to $30,000 a year, all the increase in property taxes is. And then as you look down through the rest of the revenues, I don't think there's anything that really stands out. Now, we did back down, of course, we did back down, of course, in '48, '49 under marijuana establishment fees because we had expected last year that our two dispensaries would be open and we would receive some additional fees from those. But of course, it did not open for different reasons. And so we backed that back down to $10,000. And that $10,000 is just the license fee and all fees for both licenses issued to those dispensaries. Everything else is pretty standard as you go through the revenues. From your review, maybe they may have any questions about revenues?
The third item is the cell towers.
Uh, is that contractual number in the cell tower?
Um, yes, I believe we received a contract.
It's not a lot, I know that.
Um, I was saying... Twenty, and I think it is in water budget.
Twenty or twenty-one thousand.
It's not general fund revenue.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's on the water towers.
It's on the water.
Oh, okay.
So it's in the water budget.
Okay.
There were a couple of things we talked about at the last Budget Study Session, the Justice Training PA 302. Remember, you guys were asking about that expenditure in the police, and I said there was a revenue line that matches it. There was a revenue line there. Also, the CDGB reimbursement, the revenue to match the expenditures that we talked about also at the last meeting.
Yeah, so that will be located in your water budget when you get that.
I have a couple of questions. It looks like our miscellaneous permits doubled. What, is there a theme to the permits people are getting that we can encourage?
Yeah, so miscellaneous permits would, uh, would just be because of increased activity in the village, you know, so there are permits for...
Daner.
Yeah, Daner is a good name, but probably not active one. So just miscellaneous things.
Okay, and then the, um, the sex offender registration more than doubled. Is that a higher fee or more offenders in the area?
So sex offender registration, we had budgeted in '22, '23, $2,000.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at '21, '22.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, so this year we only budgeted $500 because it did not reach that level.
Okay, okay.
And basically, I mean, that's how we come about some of these revenues that are not hard numbers, like property actually are hard numbers, but I mean, some of these that you don't receive X amount from places, if it varies from year to year, we base next year's projection on last year's experience.
Okay.
But your total revenues, 3,789,746, you know, so up a little over $150,000 total from what was amended budget '22, '23. Still does not reach the level that the village was at in revenues back in the mid-2000s quarter, everything got cut. And so they always said, you know, it'd be budget years '25, '26, '27 before you caught up to where we were back then, but it doesn't appear that we're even going to make that. All right, so that is, that's General Revenue. So if you want, we'll go ahead and finish off these other couple of general fund budgets, and then that way, Brian, are you also ready?
I go wherever you want.
Okay. All right, yeah, so sort of what is finish up these three, and then we'll move right into, into Brian's presentation. So Brian Lawson is the layman on the parks, and so Brian, correct, or Brian will carry that.
The only thing I want to point out on parks is project costs. Last year we did, we had some ARPA funds, and we did a new play structure at Lakeside. That is completed. We've got some sidewalk to complete around that, and we just purchased a couple of small pavilions for Waterworks Park. Next year, Parks has brought forward doing the next phase of removing the fence at Lakeside and putting some kind of fencing or decorative deterrents at Waterworks Park. So that budget is, right now it's $10,000, and that may fluctuate up if there's extra revenue, but right now we're looking at $10,000.
Is there a reason why it's dropping by a third?
Just the other general fund accounts.
Okay, so everything's taken up a little bit more money?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that. I would say you have to remember, and it's not a criticism, it's just reality. So in the past with Hollyween, for example, the, that was a completely merchant-driven event, and so they paid for everything. This year, Parks has moved over Hollyween to the regular budget to where it's $1,800 or $2,000 that used to be donation or fundraised to now it's general fund budget. And there's nothing wrong with that, and it's difficult to raise funds currently, not just in Holly, everywhere. And so we understand that, but I think a combination of what Brian said and then just a few more things moved, moved over.
It's just concerning to me because I'm, you know, it's a 33% cut where I'm not seeing that in any other department. And it's, it's kind of disappointing because I feel like parks are something that is a constant thing being talked about in this community, and I think people are probably going to be disappointed that one of the major things that they're looking for were cutting by 33%.
So I think if I were to ask that question, I mean, how I would respond to that is this, is the Police Department reduced their budget by $10,000, the Fire Department reduced theirs by $10,000, Parks did not reduce their budget. Money was just shifted a little bit, and because of the projected revenues, we felt that this was a safe number. Now, in the future, I mean, if we do see increased revenues and Parks has a specific project, they can always come to the council with a recommendation. You know, so I would say it's specific project driven, and I think it's important, you know, you see the Planning Commission working on capital improvement plan and master planning for the village as a whole, and they deal with mostly infrastructure or larger items like that. I think Parks, if they developed a strategic plan, capital improvement plan for projects in the future, then if we see additional revenues come in, that's always something that council can consider. But I mean, just rather than just say, well, we want to increase Parks project lines to, I'll just pick a number, to 25,000, but we don't have a specific project, I mean, I would be a little hesitant to do that.
Well, of course, I'm not asking for an increase, I'm asking for the same.
Well, and I would say overall, it is the same.
Yeah, if you look at the totals for the department at the bottom, it's actually an increase of like $1,500.
Right, and that's because of the workers, not because of project cost, which is the biggest thing for parks.
No, that's true. Yeah, from an overall scheme, it's a little bit of an increase. From that one specific line, it's a decrease, but I mean, I would, yeah, I would just say that that's, you know, where we felt comfortable with what was proposed so far. So I mean, we began that work at Lakeside Park last year.
Right.
And so, I mean, we have a good start on that.
And then just one more question for, I see that we had 15 allotted and we used five, but we picked up those gazebo, so is that included in that?
Yeah, we talked about the parks. No, the, that's where I made sure that the money from when we had the March meeting and we talked, or April meeting, and we talked about how much money was left, and that's why I mentioned that May's Parks meeting, that there was $3,800 for those two gazebos.
Right.
There was about $2,500 to top off the soft fall at the new play structure, and then with the, if there's any remaining money, we'll purchase some trees or rocks and start with that phase for...
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding parks? Okay.
Cemetery didn't change a lot overall. The only thing in there is project cost, and has to do some fence work around the, you know, the border of the park. Over time, it's just deteriorated and got beaten up a little bit, so we'll look at repairing some of that. Other than that, everything is, pretty much hasn't changed. And this is my 13th year doing budgets, and overall, my general fund budgets have pretty much stayed. The only increase is we usually see our personnel costs or healthcare costs and stuff like that, so... Any questions on cemetery? It's 37 acres and about 5,000 tombstones, so...
And really, this is not a budgetary issue, but since we're talking about cemeteries, one of the issues are time-consuming things up there is the actual maintenance or the trimming around the individual headstones. Well, a lot of people, and I understand it completely, bringing extra decorations or ornaments or plantings, which create an issue which actually don't comply with the rules up at the cemetery, you know, just because you end up with a, a lot of times debris left if things die or they get destroyed and they're not cleaned up, and the workers have to clean around it. So we'll be looking at those rules in the future and most likely bring some recommendations for changes with those.
That's pretty sensitive. Good luck with that.
It is for sure. Yep.
Any other questions or comments with regard to cemetery? Or for that matter, general revenue or parks and rec before we move on to our presentation?
Just a small clarification on parks. You know, a lot of spotlights have been on parks, obviously lately, so if the Parks Board was to come to us with, you know, a request for a raise in the budget for a specific project that they had in mind, that's something that could be considered.
I think particularly if we see an increase in revenues, yeah, I think that that's something that could be looked at for sure.
Thank you for that.
And it's something that I have mentioned to people who have asked me about parks in the past, is just what Mr. Walker commented, you know, I know you've been working on kind of a master plan.
We have that.
And, you know, long-term, what are you looking at project-wise over the next three to five years? And that helps us as we look at this to, you know, to go, oh, we have a project, and maybe, you know, maybe it's a $30,000, $40,000 project.
Right, yeah.
And you go, well, we can't do that out of just one budget, but we know that if we do it close to the end of one year and the beginning of another year, that we can, we can actually accomplish something, you know. I'd love to see things done in the parks, you know.
I think everybody would.
But I also understand our budgetary constraints and plans, I think, are helpful. It's one of the things, you know, we're looking at in the Planning Commission right now is doing a capital improvement plan and developing that, and, you know, having those long-term visions helps us go, think about when there is funds, where we know we want to utilize them, and also to look for grants then at that time, you know.
That would be nice, yeah.
We go, oh, there's something good that we want to accomplish, and if it's already in our mindset that these things are out here to be done, and some grant shows up or an opportunity, we go, that's where we're going to apply for this, you know.
Yeah, we, we brought that up actually at our meetings with the Spark Grants, which are a no-match. You don't need a master plan, and yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from council before we proceed? Mr. Brian Camiller, and I hope I'm pronouncing your name right.
You'd probably do better than we do. So I would, just by way of introduction, so Pam Hill was with us last week in Plant Moran. Brian also is with Plant Moran. Brian specializes, amongst other things, but in this area of rate study and utility studies. And so we try to have, we started a little while back, of having Brian or somebody from his team come in every five or six years and do an in-depth study and future forecasting for us, and then in between those times, then staff, Debbie, Brian, and I, we do our internal study just to make sure that we stay on track. So we're very happy always to have Brian with us, just bring us up to date on any changes maybe in the law, but also to talk to us specifically about our system. So although lots of municipalities have municipal water systems, they're all different because they all have different components to them. Actually, Brian told me that, that's why I said it. Go ahead, Brian.
All right, thank you very much. Good morning, apologize for being late, there's an accident on 23, but it's probably been four or five years since I've been here talking about this, but you'll be happy to know, nothing substantial has to change with the way that you are conducting water and sewer business. So the methodology that you established many years ago is still very sound. There's no reason to throw it out and start over again, it's just a matter of maintaining and updating. So the, the model itself, if you were here the last time I spoke, and it's been probably four or five years, there's not a substantial change to how the calculation works. We just update the inputs into the model based on what has happened in actuality for the last several years so that we can see the trends, and then we rely on the village to provide estimates of capital and/or debt service if you're going to fund it that way. So if we just take the inputs and we stick them in the model and do some, some math, it spits out what you should do, or at least a direction that you should consider going over the next several years. So it is a five-year rate model, but it doesn't mean that by adopting it, you would be approving five years' worth of increases. It's, this is the direction we're going. We evaluate every year, like, like they said, that they do an internal look, but this, it's like turning a cruise ship, very slowly, we're just going to kind of turn the nose in the right direction, and we'll make adjustments as we go. But if, if everything that we predicted as far as inflationary increases, cost increases, usage, sales, that sort of thing, if we hit the, the mark exactly on all of them, which again, never happens, but if all of these things exactly happened, it's a five-year smoothed rate increase so that the customers of the system are, they learn to accept, and yours have learned to accept, that we're not going to do any crazy change, we're on a path, maybe it's a, it's an X percent increase, or it's X plus one, or X minus one, but this is the direction we're, we're heading. So with that, so the, the village is planning approximately nine million of capital improvements in the near future, and so the rates that you have currently, the cash you currently have in the bank, no surprise, that's not adequate on its own to continue paying your bills as they come due, providing service, and then in addition, do $9 million of capital. So just knowing that the capital is coming, you have to know that there has to be a rate increase coming. Things cost more money year to year, it's just the way life works, and so we, we can't get away from that. I mentioned the five years, I mentioned the capital projects, but the calculation itself is working the exact same way that the village is used to doing. The rate, just as a reminder of some of the things that we do, so this is done on a cash needs basis. So even though in your water and sewer fund, the, you might see depreciation expense, well, we don't have that here. Depreciation is theoretical and it's, it's an accounting term, but it's not cash out the door. Likewise, in your water and sewer fund, you don't see capital outlay as an expense because this is full accrual accounting. We capitalize it, put it on the balance sheet, and depreciate it over time. But you will see capital outlay in the model, you will see debt service in the model because it's cash. It's the easiest calculation, it's the most widely understood. For anybody out in the world that is not an accounting person, the concept of depreciation and funding depreciation, it really is difficult for people at large to get. But cash in, cash out, people tend to understand. We have to spend more money, okay, that money has to come from somewhere. And as I mentioned, no change in the methodology, we're not introducing a new charge, we're not taking away any of your existing charges, we'll just be recommending slight modifications to the existing charges that you have. Always get the question, what happens if we don't increase rates? Kind of a no-brainer, you can't afford the things that you are planning to spend your money on. It's, it's just simple math. Spend more, you have to bring in more. Jerry made a point about every system being unique, and that is absolutely true. And I always get the question, how do our rates compare to our neighbor to the north or to the west, or, you know, tell, can you benchmark us across the county? And my answer is always absolutely not, because what everyone else is doing has nothing to do with what you have to do. Your system is unique to you. Your neighbors have a different customer base, they have either done a better or worse job of maintaining infrastructure, their number of employees, their cost structure is completely different from yours. So to make any kind of decision based on what others in the region are doing, it, it really, in my opinion, doesn't make any sense. Focus on the four walls of your community, what do you have to do, what are your plans to do, and then the math works itself out. If it's more or less than a neighbor, so be it. You have to do what is best for the Village of Holly. Okay, I'll go through, and I, if you've heard me present on water and sewer before, I, I might make it sound easier than it is because I compare it to ninth grade algebra. If you remember ninth grade algebra, we're solving for x. We know a bunch of the parts of the equation, but there's that one thing we don't know that that's what we're trying to solve, and it's very similar to setting rates. We know what our costs are. We know that you have a treatment plant to run, you have to buy big-ticket items of capital outlay, you have to pay existing debt service, and you have to pay your people. We know what those costs are, plus or minus a couple percent, and we can nail it pretty good. So we put all those things together, we calculate the total cost pool. If you had one, we would calculate the readiness to serve charge. You do not, which is fine, you don't have to use a fixed component to help pay for admin. Instead, you have a fixed component to pay for debt service. And so from the total costs of, including the debt service, we pull out that fixed charge, what we expect your fixed charge to generate, along with penalties and interest and other miscellaneous revenues of the system. And when you subtract that, all of that from the cost pool, it leaves you with the amount of money that you have to get in the form of your variable rate. So we take that dollar, divide it by the number of units we expect to sell, which is, is very predictable, given history, and from there, we divide one by the other, you get the variable charge to customers. And if we were operating in a vacuum, and we looked at every single year in a vacuum, one year at a time, this is where we would stop. But we don't live in a vacuum, and this is not a one-year model, it's a five-year model. So we want to spread the, the rate increase over a period of years, and here you've always used five, which I think is the right number in almost every case. 10 years is too far, too much stuff changes. Three years, I think, is usually too short because it, it doesn't give enough time for projects to develop and other plans to happen. So I agree with doing five years. So the model is going to calculate over a five-year period, the annual rate, year in, year out, over five years, that has to happen in order to do, one, pay your bills as they come due, and two, most importantly, maintain a certain amount of money in the bank. That's your target working capital. That's your target working capital. So if you paid for everything with the existing rates and bled your reserves dry, you didn't do the right thing. There has to be something in the bank. And so we actually do have a calculation as to what that is. I refer to them as buckets. So we have to fill the buckets of working capital. Since you bill on a monthly basis, we take a 30-day cycle and add 30 days to it. Reason being, your customers pay you slower than you pay your people and your vendors. So your bills come in, you pay them very quickly. It's very cyclical, it's like clockwork. Customers might sit on their bill for a while. And so we have to make sure that we've got enough money in the bank to cover that float period, to make sure that all of the customers pay, and we have enough money to pay our people and our vendors while we're waiting on collecting. One year worth of debt service, so debt payments are twice a year, one is an interest-only, one is a principal and interest. So we fill the bucket in order to make the next payment, we make the payment, we empty the bucket, we have to fill it back up again. And so the target is always to have next year's payments ready to go. So we'll have one year's worth of debt service at all times to make that next payment. Bucket number three is the emergency capital replacement, so that's, oops, something broke, and we need to fix it immediately. We don't have time to go out for bonds, we don't have time to borrow. In order for our system to continue operations, we have to fix it today. And so there's an industry calculation, somewhere between one and 5% usually of the, and this is accounting jargon, the net book value of the capital assets of your system. And so we do a little calculation, and it says how much, you know, it's a couple hundred thousand, we're going to just keep that on hand at all times, in case, oops, something broke. And then bucket four, some places have it, some places don't, it's planned capital replacement. So every system should have an idea of big-ticket projects that are going to happen over the next several years, and, but there's a question of how we're going to pay for them. It's some mix of financing or paying cash out of pocket. And so when something is not planned to be financed, we want to plan to have enough cash in the bank to just make the payment as we need to. So when all is said and done, if everything happens the way the model predicts, if we were correct with all of our assumptions, after five years, you will have done everything that you planned to do, bought the things you planned to buy, and finish with the target amount of working capital in the bank. So you'll have accomplished everything that you planned, and set yourself up to continue doing that in the future. And I mentioned before, you're not going to adopt five years of rates, that's not the idea. It's, let's look at a five-year horizon, see what direction we're going, and if all holds true, this is a smoothed increase over that period of time. Year to year, it's going to go up or down a percent here or there, maybe you end up freezing one year, but in general, over a five-year horizon, this is where you'd end up being. Okay, so working capital, what do we want to have? So as of the beginning of the model, and we did a calculation as of the last closed financial year, so June 30, 2022, water had four and a quarter million, sewer had two and a half million. But when we go over the next five, and it's, the reason why it's different than the target or from the previous target, some things go up, some things go down, but as long as we have enough in total, we feel we're pretty good. So the new calculation for target, water only needs 1.8. Why is that? Because some bonds are falling off. So it's less money that we have to have on hand. Sewer needs a little bit of an increase over five years, just because of additional capital and whatnot, that'll be there. But assuming we do, everything happens as we say, you'll actually have less money at the end than you do now, which is okay, completely fine. It's because those targets change as projects come on, projects end, debt comes on, debt gets paid off. Operationally, your costs are the same, you know, approximately with 2% plus or minus year over year. But it's those big-ticket things that will fluctuate over time and dictate what the target is. So this is the water calculation, this is all in the model. Those two circles are just showing you that at the beginning and at the end, we are hitting the targets, or at the beginning, that's our existing point that was listed on the previous slide. The bottom right corner shows that the model is calculating that over five years, we hit our target. We do the same thing for sewer. Over five years, we will hit our target, and those are all the ins and the outs, paying our bills, customers paying us. Should definitely note here that debt charge that you have, that fixed charge that affects every customer, we are not recommending, and the model does not calculate, any need to change that charge at this time. Over the next few years, three of your four bonds are going to come off. You'd say, well, shouldn't we be cutting the rate then? Hold that thought. There's likely to be additional projects and additional bonds. So today, no, you should not change that rate. Three or four years from now, as the bonds start to fall off, and new bonds come on, presumably, that debt charge would either need to be adjusted up or down. And based on the conversations that we've had, it sounds like the additional debt that the village would plan on taking on is less than the debt that would be coming off. So down the road, let's say four or five years, that debt charge could come down if those assumptions hold true. But for the next three or four years, your debt payments are fixed, and the debt charge has been set to provide enough funding for those payments. So for the time being, let's just sit tight, and over the next few years, as you do projects, we'll figure out whether or not that debt charge has to go up or down. But fingers crossed, it'll be down. The other component is your variable rate. It's actually very, very reasonable. 2.6% per year for water, 2.7% per year for sewer. The effect on an individual, single-family home, obviously, it depends on how much water they use. So, you know, a little retired couple down the street, they may not have as much of a need for water as me and my wife and my two teenage kids that take half-hour showers. So for me and my family, it would probably be closer to that $4 a month. For the little old lady or little couple down the street, it's probably about a buck a month. Now, you might think to yourself, well, Brian, you said that we were going to lower our cash balance, and we still have a rate increase. Yes, that is true. Those two things happen at the same time. We are raising rates, but we're going to be spending money a little bit faster than we're raising the rates. So even though there is a rate increase, we are doing a planned spend-down of your target to maintain the target, not keep a dollar more than what the calculation shows you should have. So the next steps, assuming what we've presented is reasonable and acceptable, then we can finalize the model, we'll turn it over to you, it is yours, and finish our written report. Because you are an audit client, there are certain hoops we have to jump through in order to do everything according to our professional rules and maintaining our independence and whatnot. So the written report has to go through our standards department, and then there's some paperwork back and forth between us and Jerry, but then it'll be okay to publish, and you'll get a copy of it. As part of your budgetary process, assuming you're approving the rates, then you'll have to get that changed in BSNA and get it ready for the bills effective, I assume, July 1, first one's going out. Any questions on this?
I have one. On the last slide, it said $1 to $4 per month per single family. Is that total or per unit use? Because it was listed under variable rate.
Total.
Thank you.
This is the total impact to a customer in a month.
Okay.
I would say also, some of those things, and we've talked about it briefly, in fact, you had it on your last agenda with, they call it clean water, but really it's sewer water, and then this next agenda for drinking water, where we have application in for grants and/or loans. So that will be part of that, that will impact future. Additionally, as I talked about at the last meeting, I met this past week with Senator McLean regarding some federal dollars that are going to be coming available, and if we are successful in obtaining any amount from them, that will impact that formula also. So I mean, we are actually looking for other sources besides our customers, but that, what Brian talked about, is without those outside dollars coming in.
I have a question. Wasn't the original reason that we went to the bond issue was to keep the water bills from having to increase to where it should have been? And I believe, and this has been quite a few years ago, and Mr. Wapo, maybe you can expound on this, but we were told that our, we did not have enough in our budget to cover the sewer and water.
Back then, yes.
Increases.
Yes, that is true.
And that was the main reason that we went to the bond issue, to absorb that, so that we didn't have to.
The debt charge. So the bonds come in, come out, you do projects, you have to finance them, but the debt charge itself, it's probably been at least a decade or longer.
Oh, it's been longer than that, actually. So it actually predated both Brian and I, starting, it was back in the mid-'80s when the village let those bonds, and they let those bonds for expansion of the system into what everybody called the palti homes, but really, it wasn't palti at the time, it was silverman. But we also did natural expansions and upgrades in both our water and sewer plant, which we would have had to have done anyways. And so what was happening was, the village was not charging enough in that fixed rate, I think it was maybe $5.
Yeah, it was $5 in each.
Yeah.
$5 in sewer, $5 in water.
Yeah, so it was just $5, and that was not enough to cover those bonds, so they were augmenting with, using a combination of the commodity rate, which they were collecting the usage, as well as spending down their fund balance, which are those large amounts that Brian talked about, that you keep in reserve for operations or projects or emergencies or whatever. So there just was not enough money. I mean, the system was heading towards, just in simple terms, bankrupting itself. And so that's when the debt service charges started to climb, in order to take care of that debt service portion. So that's all those bonds pay for. Those bonds do not pay for operational aspects, they pay for debt service. And so the commodity rate that, where we look at increasing every year, traditionally it's been 2%, but it calls for a little higher recommendation this time, is for just the operational end of it, not the debt service. So when the debt service piece starts to decrease or drop off in a few years, that's when we will look at, and we already are running through some calculation and needs assessments, as far as what level will be needed to be requested of you to approve in the future, that 3705, which is your current debt service, will change. We think that it will change downward, but you'll still have that debt service piece, but this usage rate, commodity rate, we call it, will always need to fund itself.
The one basically pays the bonds, and the other pays daily operations.
That's correct.
Correct.
I guess I could have said it that succinctly.
Without the bonds, we would have been in.
Oh, for sure, yeah, yeah, you would not have been able to pay your bills without increasing the debt service charge.
Well, the thing, another thing that I like to think about with the debt charge is, it's fixed, our debt payments are fixed, we're spreading the cost of this debt service across all customers, everyone is sharing equally in this sunk cost of maintaining or improving our plant and our infrastructure. If you want to use more water, you pay more on the variable rate. If you want to use less, you pay less. But we're all sharing in the cost of these prior improvements on a pretty ratable basis.
I just know that there were a lot of folks that were upset about the bonds, and didn't quite understand it, and I just wanted that on record, that's why.
I can tell you, I do this 12, 15 times a year, different communities, some are recurring. Nobody likes their rates. Everybody thinks that they pay too much, and the neighbor's paying less, and at some point, I gotta think that there's someone, somewhere, that is happy, because they're paying nothing. But I have yet to find that community, but. I will. That'll be part of my presentation, if I find that one community that's happy.
So in your presentation a couple of years ago, you talked about the difference, the different ways either doing bonding and paying for infrastructure that's already been done, and basically, it's those who are currently using are paying for what was there or done, as opposed to saving all of that and then having it advanced pay.
Yes.
Can you explain that a little?
Sure.
Better than?
So most bonds or debt financing for water and sewer work is over 20 years. But you put a line in the ground, it's going to last 50, right? So it's not, it wouldn't be super fair for us to charge our customers today, next year, the year after, the year after, for this big project we're going to do, and then they leave the community, so they paid for something that they don't get to use 10 years down the road. So instead of doing it that way, let's finance it over the 20 years, and the residents that are here using the system over that 20 years are paying 1/20th of the cost every year, approximately. So they're paying for their usage of the system versus paying for their kids or grandkids, what they're going to do with it.
Yeah.
And just as an example, I did a little spreadsheet. I thought, I thought I saw in the model 2.7% for both, but I see now you have 2.6% for one. But just an example, 2.7% for both would be 22 cents a month for water for 1,000 gallons, and 36 cents a month for sewer for 1,000 gallons. So it's 58 cents per month per 1,000 gallons, is the 2%, 2.7% increase.
I think it's just rounding.
Trying to make the account to look bad.
Any other questions for Mr. Kamler?
So just for timing, just so that you know, so your current budget that Brian will talk about in a few, Brian Clausen, will talk about in a few minutes, is based on the current rate structure, because you have not approved, you have not considered, although you have recommended, you have not considered a rate increase, or decrease, but a rate increase, we'll be asking for it. So you have the current rate, and so you will see a council action request along with a resolution for a new recommended water rate in your June meeting, at the same time you see your budget. And that's one of those things, if approved, that will change your budget in the future.
We got on the presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We have been going for not quite an hour, but I think it's a natural break, if anyone would like to take five minutes to go to the bathroom or get some fresh air. Thank you very much. We'll come back at 10:55.
It's interesting to hear somebody say, going out to smoke is getting fresh air. I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, and everyone's going to come back in and out.
Yeah, and everyone's gonna come back in and out.
We'll get some fresh air.
Yes, it's small.
There, they go years without.
We moved urine out of this pipe.
Yeah, tore all the floors down there and everything.
All the town.
Well, it's probably worse now.
Thanks. I don't know, it could be worse. It was so bad.
We are back on here. Sorry, that was a long five minutes. Um, alright, we are back in here, um, building and grounds.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Council. So we'll continue in the general fund area and building and grounds, Mr. Klassen.
The only major change in building and grounds is you see in project costs, and part of that is in conjunction with DDA for the downtown bathroom and the new village offices, where we end up there, that we have money set aside to do the improvements needed.
So we're currently, Debbie and I have met a couple of times with H2A, which is the architectural firm that council approved to do our needs assessment, and they are in the finishing stages of that now. And so, once we complete that, the next phase, then we'll move on to actual architectural work for either space. It doesn't really matter, and so we budgeted money for those needs in that line.
Will that be at the July meeting when the assessment is presented?
We're hoping that it's July. It could be August, but they are shooting for July.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on that?
So you have a significant increase in wages, correct?
We're building.
Can you act in five to seven to five?
Eighty-four to one oh four.
Oh, never mind, I'm looking at building fund.
Oh, okay.
I'm in the wrong sheets.
I tried to highlight the ones that were, we're gonna talk about today, and maybe the other ones like that we already discussed.
Got it, okay.
Well, since the chiefs aren't here, the next two budgets we can cut.
When we went, we went over what he was talking about, the building fund last week.
Yeah.
And I believe that was because of Jeremy Watson that it went up, because...
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Public Works is the next.
Yeah.
And I think the only major change in that is just the wage increase. If you see, it's only, it's only like a $12,000 difference between last year's budget and this year's budget, so there's no major changes in DPW. So if there's any questions on that.
Any questions on that? Um, major roads.
Major roads and local roads are broken down into four categories. Street maintenance, which is where we do coal patching, surface repairs, winter maintenance is snow and ice removal, traffic services are the signages. Last year, we did, we replaced all the signs west of Saginaw, updated them. We have a list this year to do east of Saginaw, so you'll see the, what they call a high prismatic, which is the little diamonds in it, so when your lights hit and stuff like that, it's a better reflection. We try to increase the size, size of some of our street ID signs, so that people can see, especially along Grady Charles Saginaw. So, you know, the standard before was six inch, now we're going to like three inch or bigger, so if you're coming up to a street, you're not, I mean, with GPS, it makes it a lot easier, much even, you know, to be able to see the signs. And then the last one is trees, which we have a contractor come in late winter, early spring, and do tree removal and tree trimming, and then if we have any emergencies after storms, or someone brings a complaint forward, that's where that stuff comes out of. So if there's any questions on major streets...
Yeah, the net.
The what?
The net, sorry, revenues and appropriations, the final line. We're looking at a vast difference from the recommended budget this year compared to twenty-one and two, not so much of a difference from twenty-two and three, and right now, we're in the red for this year.
There's a lot of the revenue hasn't come in yet.
Hasn't come in, okay.
In both local and major streets, we get what's called Act 51 money, so that is all, that's, it's all dependent on, we turn the reports based on equipment we use for the roads, and then it's also based on what the state changes the rates every year, so they go up and down. So, if we're using the same type of equipment, sometimes it goes up. I've seen it go down in a lot of categories this year, so that's where our revenue can change here, so.
So when you receive your final budget for adoption in June, so that line will be rectified, because as Pam talked about in our last session, we have to present a budget, which in layman's terms is balance, which means we would appropriate money from the fund balance, but we don't think that that's gonna be necessary, because by the time Debbie accounts for the finalized numbers, we think that that will be fine.
That's why we moved the June meeting to the end, so we have a better understanding of what's coming in, and then we just estimate the last, like, three weeks, which we can usually do pretty accurately just than last year.
Anything else on major roads?
What part of roads are major?
Elm. There's actually more. There's Elm, Saginaw, Maple, College, Sherman, and I think there's a couple more sections of roads, and that's based on traffic and the design of the road, so.
North?
Uh, I don't believe north is.
No.
Carriage and?
Broad?
Uh, yes, broad is from the village limits to Maple, and then we have a short section during its local.
Will that change now that this is gonna be the middle school? Will any of these roads change to be a major road?
No, because...
No, but, I mean, to your point, this road that's right in front right now will be eliminated. So this road really is a private drive, and so the school will be closing that off as part of their new design and reconstruction.
This whole section of East?
From Baird to Sherman will be a private entrance to the school.
So we've had considerable discussion with the schools about that, but that is the final plan, and they do own the property.
Now, we own the property. We do people.
Great point, great point.
You may wanna let them know that.
Superintendent, I had a very long conversation about that.
Sure.
And, your progress was good.
Uh, local roads?
Local roads is similar to major roads, broken down into four sections. Street maintenance, winter maintenance, what we call traffic services, and trees. Traffic service also includes the line strapping that the county does for us, and then in-house, we do the stop bars and crosswalks, and some of the thermal plas, school legends, and turnarounds, that kinda stuff, so.
I see for, like, the street maintenance for local roads, we had thirty assigned for last year, but we didn't use any?
Um, that was, at one time, we thought College was local, so that it's actually major street, so we were gonna use that, we're in the design stages for improvements from Baird Street to Maple for storm and resurfacing, so that's where that was.
Okay.
So basically, you didn't use it this year, and you're pushing it off to next year?
No, it'll be shifted over to major streets.
Oh, okay.
So...
In, in a modified, in a amended for this year's budget?
Part of it, yes, 'cause the, the costs come in at, I believe it's a little over eight hundred thousand for that section of College Street, so these are just for the engineering costs, the initial estimates, and the site work for, to get the big package ready. In local streets, if we are sure, that's, that is supplemented by the general fund also, so that's where, that's that catch 22 again with general fund budget money, so.
Do we have enough in trees to, how do I wanna say, to cover demand, I suppose I would say, 'cause it seems to me like that's something that comes up a lot with residences, you know, concerned about, you know, old rotting trees and damage to the property and that kinda thing.
We usually see a lot of tree complaints come in, in the spring and the fall, 'cause in the spring and the fall is when the trees are looking to bloom out or go into hibernation, and so they call, they call for water, so usually that's when you see them, they'll eat the sidewalks, or they cause sewer issues, or they start to die out, so we try to, the rule of thumb is if it's got green foliage on it, and we don't see any, what I call frasses, and that means it's insect infested around the bottom, looks like sawdust, we try to leave them up as long as possible, 'cause we are a tree city, and then we also, you know, if we took down every tree that someone complained about, we wouldn't have a lot. Last year, we started a program to try to start replacing some of the trees, so I had to compile a list over the last ten years of all the trees were removed, and I think we put minimal amount of money in there, so trees usually three to five hundred dollars, so we're looking at maybe ten trees a year to replace, based on probably fifty or sixty that we've taken down over the last ten years.
Okay.
Are there specific trees that can be planted in the redway?
Yeah, there's a list in the ordinances. We don't allow ash trees anymore, obviously. We don't allow elm trees. We try to stick with hardy trees. We got some non-fruit bearing trees that had the red and white flowers in them, so we added those to the list.
Beautiful.
Lot of, lot of red, uh, red oak trees, maple trees, but people want, you know, we take a fifty-foot, two-foot diameter tree out, people want that right away, well, we use a replacement with a three-inch caliper tree that's maybe twenty feet tall. Takes a long time for us to get there.
Yeah.
I think too, I'm not sure where you're hearing complaints. I see a lot on social media, and I think that sometimes people don't realize it's already in the process of being investigated, or no one's reported it to the proper authority yet, so Facebook isn't really the place to handle that.
I tried to monitor Facebook to a point, but...
I gave it up for Lent, it was great. So peaceful. Anything else on local roads? Lake Improvement Fund?
So this is specifically with the mill pond, and the weed treatment of that, you'll recall, each year, we do a public hearing in which we receive comment, once we get an estimate of what the cost of treatment in the mill pond will be, and then council approves the rate. The revenue for that budget is fifty-six hundred, which is the cost of the treatment, and so that has not increased from last year.
Does that's what we do, a, like, like how we have with the garbage, like a three or four-year term for a contract? Would you do that?
Yeah, so we do not do a multi-year, we do a year-by-year with them, just because of costs fluctuating, but partly, I think, because they own property on the mill pond, Aqua Weed, they do an outstanding job, but I think they also cost contain for us also.
I didn't not raise rates in over five years.
Oh, good.
Just curious.
Solid Waste is your next budget, and so that is for refuse service in the village. We are proposing no increase. You can see the revenue that is estimated is four hundred and two thousand two sixty-six, and the expenditure is estimated at four oh one nine oh six. There is a small fund balance within there, just to pay for any emergency needs that would come up. And this is the la, we're in the last year of the Republic contract for Republic Services, so we will be looking at taking bids or proposals for a new service. So we're contacted every year by various haulers, because, you know, it's a good business, so we're a compact, dense community, and so hopefully, we'll have some competitive bids. I'm not sure they'll be any cheaper, but it should keep it from increasing, if it increases at all to a minimum.
Jerry, would that have any impact on the dumpster down there at Red Deville and...
No, no. So the village owns both of those. As you recall, the dumpster, the compactor at the Red, in the Red Deville lot, that was part of the last contract extension, in which that was part of the contract that they would provide that, and the village would take ownership of that compactor, and then the other compactor off Civic, we purchased. And so we think both those programs have been successful, and not only keeping the trash cleaned up and secured, but stopping dumping in those areas.
Under appropriations, I'll say thank you for your patience with my learning and ahead of time. We were in the red in twenty-one, two, and then we're projected at three sixty. It looks like here, the recommended budget is three sixty under net revenues appropriations. What, what is all of that, please?
Well, so that's just the over/under, and so we'll be collecting, as you can see in the revenues, you're gonna be collecting four oh two two sixty-six, you're only spending four oh one nine oh six, so three sixty is the difference.
Just the difference, okay.
Anything else on solid waste? Okay, transportation?
So transportation, of course, is our senior trains, and it's pretty much the same picture as it was the prior year. We're collecting forty-six five hundred in projected revenues. Our expenses are forty-six three seventy-six, and so a hundred and twenty-four dollars difference. We are looking to possibly make some changes in this area in conjunction with the village that passed countywide, and so we're trying to secure what funds would be appropriate to come to Holly, since our residents are paying into this county village, we certainly should receive some of those funds.
Action without representation.
Yeah, and, and increased, in, increased service. Now, some of that service, you know, and on candidness, will involve Debbie and I, we've already started this process of talking with other transportation providers that we may partner with. So we provide what we think for the money is a very good local senior transportation, but it's local, it's ten-mile radius, and so you can get into Grand Blank, you can get into Fenton, you know, into, just barely into Clarkston, you know, for the needs of the residents, but we feel that if we can garner a partnership with another agency, that we can expand service, perhaps to Pontiac for St. Joe Hospital, or along the M-59 corridor for the many services that are along there. So we're, we've been working on this for a few months now, we're hoping sometime this summer to get some definite direction on that, but for right now, this is your budget to maintain what we have now, that ten-mile radius for essential services.
Communications, what is communications for that? Is that how you're letting the public know that this is available?
There's cell phones.
Cell phones.
Okay. Oh, oh, gotcha, thank you. And how are we letting the public know that this service exists?
So we talk about the service through GovDelivery. We talk about the service through some social media, but really, the biggest ridership, I think, is word of mouth with the riders themselves, because, you know, it's a pretty select group. This really is not designed for somebody that has a job at Walmart in Fenton to jump on the bus and go there. This really is reserved for those that are disabled or senior, to go to the doctor, to go to dialysis, to go to the hospital, to go to the grocery store. That's really what it is. So we have, we have a very busy schedule with what we have, but we think we can improve the service and expand it, and that's what we're, our goal is.
Thank you.
Excellent. And is there anything, uh, is there any action that council could take as, as far as, you know, liaising with the county and getting our fair share, shall we say, of those, you know, dollars from the transportation village?
Yeah, I don't think so right now, but I'm certain we'll keep you abreast as we're meeting with them. So we're meeting or having discussions in conjunction with Holly Township, because we view it as one community up here to gain that money, and so Supervisor Kallis and myself have a pending meeting scheduled with the county to talk specifically about that funding piece of it, and then if for some reason that does not progress, then it may be necessary at that time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on transportation? Is there more on sewer and water funds?
Uh, yes, Brian will go over really briefly the sewer and water funds, and then pending questions will be complete.
Okay.
The sewer fund is broken into two parts. We have the collection system, which includes thirteen lift stations and all the lines that take it to the plant. You'll see there's a major increase in that, and that is to replace the Apollo Street Lift Station. The owner of that left all the way to the bank with a dollar bill that the village paid him for it, and it's a antiquated system that is currently limping along right now, so it's in dire need of replacement. The second section is the plant itself at the end of airport, and you'll see some increases there. We have what we call our primary clarifier. It had twenty-five-year-old, what they call flight boards in there, and you'll hear more about this at the next council meeting, and requesting that the equipment be purchased for that, and then out of this year's budget and next year's budget will be the installation of that. It was used equipment that was installed twenty-five years ago, the lifespan's about fifteen years on it, so we've been able to maintain it and get an extra ten years out of it. That is in, that equipment's constantly in raw sewage, that's the first line of treatment, so it sees all kinds of goodies, so. So if there's, I mean, that's a real quick, brief overview of that. There's four employees at the wastewater treatment plant that run a twenty-four-seven operation. They do a really lovely job down there, and then DPW, there's four guys at DPW that maintain the lift stations and the collection system.
Any questions or comments on...
So you said that earlier that this does not take into consideration recommended rate changes?
That's correct.
This is with existing rates?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe it shows a shortfall because of the lift station repairs and the water treatment, or the wastewater repairs, so.
So rate increase may balance that?
Yeah.
That would be up to the purse strings.
Huh?
That would be up to the purse strings.
Anything else on sewer or water?
On, on water, yes. Did we have a part-time employee go to full-time?
In water?
Underwater, on the second page, the wages from part-time went up a little bit, or no, they went, they went down quite a bit. Sorry, that was projected. Yeah, and then the retirement went up also quite a bit, so I'm wondering if we had part-time employees go to full-time and gather more benefits?
No, we have a person that, in water, that's gonna retire at the end of this year, and then in the water and sewer, there's a budgeted for a part-time clerical person, 'cause currently there's not a clerical person for water and sewer, so those would've been the shifts, the only shifts that I know of for employees. We have, we have a person in water that is eligible to retire at the end of this year.
Anything else on sewer or water, or any other questions or comments at all for today?
Thank you for keeping the budget in mind, Brian, as always.
So, so I have to say this, so all our department heads, they do a great job, because they have a lot of experience, and they're very good at what they do. I have to say this, so for Brian, I, he's part of our finance team internally that looks at all the budgets, because truthfully, Brian is the best budgeter of all the department heads, not a slam against the other one, that's just his area that he's very good at, and so you're right, Miss Musgrave, Brian does a good job. He has nine budgets in total, even though some of them are small, that he tracks independently, and that's why looking at getting a clerical person to assist him is gonna be a benefit.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Is that what Ms. Myers used to do?
Uh, no, she actually was a meter reader, and then she would go out and handle some calls in the field, but she primarily read meters, but as tech...
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, she was a meter reader.
Yeah, as technology changed, we could remote read, radio read, it just eliminated that position.
Jerry, I have one more question for you. It's not a big difference on our budget, but it is for the individual, it's for our attorney. I was wondering if we changed the parameters of payment from 2021, or if there, did he just do less work for us, 'cause it dropped three thousand dollars?
Yeah, so that, sorry, I don't have that one open in front of me, let me, let me grab it real quick. So if it's the, is it the bottom line you're talking about, or the individual municipal?
Total for Department Two Ten Attorney, and in 2021, it was eighteen thousand one thirty, and now it's...
Yeah, so I would say that that has to do with contractual union negotiations. So in that year, we had two units in the police department, separate units, that were unionized, as well as the Teamsters that cover wastewater, DPW, and our clerical staff, so we had to negotiate three separate contracts with them. In this next year, we have just one contract with the fire department, and so we look for the expense to be much less.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Yeah?
Is the DDA information in here just for information, or did you review that?
We did that last week.
We did that last.
Yeah, we did that last week. It's just in there so you have the budget in total.
Good, thank you.
The charter requires that you get a copy of the draft budget in total by the May meeting. That's why it's part of your packet for next time, even though I didn't make two copies of it, 'cause...
Not necessary, yeah.
In a couple weeks, it's gonna be garbage, so why do you want two copies?
Is there a way that we can get these maybe even a day earlier? I know, like, you guys are scrambling, trying to get the estimated revenues and stuff, and it comes down to the line, but it's just, I feel like it's a lot to go through in a day, you know?
So are you talking about just the budget package itself?
Like when we get these, yeah, like we got these on Thursday night, you know, and then we're here at nine AM, so you basically have a day to look over this. And for myself personally, like I work on Friday, so I'm sitting there last night, you know, making sure that I'm educated enough on this, you know, and I was just wondering if there's a way that we could do it even a day earlier, or maybe two days earlier, so that people can come in here, yeah.
For next year, certainly.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
It is, it is a lot of information, and we appreciate you asking the questions that you do ask, but in saying that, if you have questions outside of the meeting, I mean, rather than wonder or say them all up, if a council meeting's a month away, feel free to call Debbie, Brian, or I at any time.
I saw a lot of consistency, and I just wanna say thank you for answering all of my questions. I know I have a lot. Same.
Yeah, thank you very much to staff for everything that you guys do.
Thank you.
Yep.
If there is nothing else, we are adjourned until Tuesday evening for our regular meeting.
See you next Tuesday. See you next Tuesday.
Didn't even have to eat my almonds yet.
Yeah, last week went a, I feel like, maybe like a half an hour longer. It was a little bit more...
Anna, I didn't even, Anna, I didn't even see you sitting back there. Oh.